Good evening all, good afternoon. I'd like to call the October meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Steller to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here today at the Planning Commission Monthly Meeting to make decisions for our city. Grant us the judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter placed before us to act in accordance with what is in the best for our city and our fellow citizens. We ask that you provide safety for our protectors, the police and safety professionals, and both our military at home and abroad. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Wyman, you call the law, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Steller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any corrections to the minutes for the September meeting? If not, it was as printed. Before we open a public hearing today, the applicant has requested that Item C, which is the rezoning request, RZN 2022-007 Ellis Farm, and the applicant for rezoning request, RZN 2022-009 Retreated Creekside, that's Items C and D be removed from our agenda today for a public hearing. Commissioners, what is your choice?
So moved, I'm sure.
I got a motion for removal from Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Goodman. Can we do this with a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Item C, the Ellis Farm, has been removed from our agenda today. And Item D, the rezoning request for Retreated Creekside, has also been removed. We're now open to public hearing. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and 5 minutes for rebuttal about the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is public hearing. Subdivision variance request, SBV 2022-003 Lake Kilby Shores. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. This is subdivision variance request, SBV 2022-003 Lake Kilby Shores, submitted by Matt Howard, Lake Kilby Properties LLC applicant on behalf of Bob Burnett, Coastal Virginia Partners LLC contract purchaser, and Harvey Sternat, attorney in fact, for Flojo Properties LLC, and Diane Sternat, ET ALS property owners in accordance with Section 31 515 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a variance from the connectivity requirements for subdivisions. The subject property is located at zoning map 33, parcels 47, 48, 48A, 49, and zoning map 34, parcel 26. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned RE Rural Estate Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to subdivision variance request, SBV 2022-003. Staff Planner Amy Boekikia will present staff's report on this variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. I am first presenting a subdivision variance request, SBV 2022-3, for the purpose of granting a variance from the connectivity requirements for residential subdivisions. Following this agenda item, second on your agenda today, is a concurrent rezoning request applicable to the same parcels. This variance pertains to five parcels of land located on Lake Cahoon Road and Lake Kilby Road, south of the Pitch Kettle Farms subdivision. The property is located in the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. All of the subject parcels depicted above in yellow are currently zoned RE Rural Estate zoning. The combined acreage of the property is 106 acres. The surrounding zoning to the north includes the Pitch Kettle Farms subdivision, zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. To the south of this site, you have a single-family home zoned RE Rural Estate, followed by the Route 58 bypass and property zoned M2 Heavy Industrial. To the east, you have the Route 58 bypass, as well as undeveloped property zoned Conservation. And then lastly, to the west, there are also single-family homes and undeveloped property zoned Agricultural. As stated, a concurrent rezoning request is also being considered this afternoon to rezone the property to the RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District for the purpose of developing 225 single-family homes. During discussions that the applicant held with the community related to their rezoning proposal, nearby residents expressed the desire to not have a full vehicular road connection between the proposed new subdivision and the existing community, where it currently has a temporary cul-de-sac. Although connectivity between residential subdivisions is a standard requirement outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO requires that streets within residential subdivisions be aligned and coordinated with existing and planned streets. Further, the street system shall be logically extended to abutting properties for the convenient movement of vehicles and pedestrians alike. The recorded final plat for the Pitch Kettle Farms subdivision depicts a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Pitch Kettle Farms Lane in front of lots 58 and 59, which is consistent with our street improvement standards. In the future, when those undeveloped parcels to the south were to be developed, the temporary cul-de-sac would be removed and the public road would be extended. The developer requests that rather than having a standard full-access public street connection in this area for all vehicles, they would instead like to provide a modified street connection that would be designed to support the needs of emergency vehicles only. The developer proposes to mimic the example above, which is taken from the Moore's Point community. At the end of Dabney Lane, where you have a cul-de-sac that faces towards Nansman Parkway, there is an emergency access-only route in this subdivision. The yellow dashed lines represent compacted services, whether gravel or sidewalk, that can support the weight of a fire truck. The modified emergency access connection that they would like to request would be in the area called out above by the red arrow on the developer's conceptual layout. This conceptual layout depicts a potential future connection in blue to the undeveloped property to the northeast, tax map 34*2, as well as two other entrances on Lake Kilby and Lake Cahoon Road that are shown in orange. Thus, while not providing a full vehicular access at the location pointed to in red, two other entrances would be provided. The purpose of the connectivity and secondary access standards is to promote an interconnected street system, as I've stated, in order to protect public health, safety, welfare, and in order to ensure that streets will function in an independent manner, to provide adequate access for emergency vehicles, and to enhance non-vehicular travel for pedestrians and bicycles. When the Suffolk Planning Commission and City Council consider a variance request, the following criteria shall be met. The variance will not be detrimental to public safety, health, welfare, or be injurious to other property. Secondly, the conditions that the requests are based on are unique and not generally applicable to other properties. Also, there should be a particular physical hardship, such as topography or something of that nature. And then lastly, the relief sought should not conflict with the zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, or official map. The proposed variance is viewed as a potential detriment to the public welfare and enjoyment, as well as the ease of travel between the two subdivisions. In the event that Lake Cahoon Road or Lake Kilby Road were blocked for whatever reason, motorists traveling through this area would have no nearby alternative routes. Additionally, without a full roadway connection, that would limit delivery services, such as USPS, FedEx, et cetera, typical deliveries to residential homes. As previously stated, the Pitch Kettle Farms subdivision was platted and approved with the presumption that the temporary cul-de-sac would be extended in the future. And then lastly, there is adequate land area on this property and no physical limitations that would prevent the street from being extended. Due to these reasons, the variance request is found to be inconsistent with the statements contained in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance. However, in the event that consideration is given to approving this request, two conditions of approval have been suggested above for your consideration. And that concludes my information related to the subdivision variance request. I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the variance at the end of the public hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Suffolk Planning Commission. My name is Greer Ferguson, and I'm here representing the applicant in this matter. And we're requesting a variance, as you can see from your proposal, which has been brought to you today. When we started this subdivision, we really hadn't thought about doing this until we met with the homeowners at Pitch Kettle Farms. And you know, Pitch Kettle Farms has been there now, I don't know, 16, 17 years it was platted. And I think what's happened there, it's a long entrance road. And so that doesn't necessarily meet with some of the things that you might want when you're looking at connectivity as head, because that's a residential street coming into Pitch Kettle Farms. And it runs straight all the way back to the cul-de-sac. And it's been developed slowly going back. And so these people have been there a long time, and they never gave any thought to all of a sudden having double the traffic they have right now. And so when they brought this to our attention, and they said, "Look, we don't mind having you all as neighbors, but we don't want you all driving all through our neighborhood. We've been here a long time, and we don't want the traffic." So we said, "Okay, that's not a problem. We like Kilby and Lake Cahoon Road, and we can give our people better access, safer access, with two good accesses off of Lake Cahoon and Lake Kilby Road." So if you, just to look at the structure and the reasons for the, flipping back to the academic reasons for why these rules are in place, and I just like looking at these, one of these is number five. Residential streets shall be designed to minimize the length of local streets to provide safe access to residences. So running more cars down Pitch Kettle Farm Drive isn't going to do anything to make Pitch Kettle Farms Lane any safer. It's not going to make any of the streets inside of our neighborhood, if approved, any shorter or any longer. It's have no impact on our internal streets. So I don't think, safety-wise, our proposal would have any impact on Pitch Kettle Farms or the safety of the residences. We have proposed that we would have an emergency entrance through the end of the cul-de-sac, and then we would leave it open to bicycles and pedestrians, so people could walk from one neighborhood to the other, they could ride their bicycle from one neighborhood to the other, but they just don't have cars intermixing between the two neighborhoods. Now, insofar as is access for our people coming in from our neighborhood, if it is approved, we've done our measurements, and the truth is, most of the folks who are going to be in our neighborhood are much closer to utilizing Holland Road and the bypass at its terminus than they are going down Pitch Kettle. It's over 8,000 feet from where you start our neighborhood to get to the Pitch Kettle bypass, and it's only 5,000 feet to get to the bypass if you go to the terminus of the bypass. So we shouldn't get this mindset that everybody's heading down Pitch Kettle Road and wants to go down this street. I don't think we, most of our people would even want that. So instead, they're going to get two good entrances coming on to, one on Lake Cahoon and Lake Kilby. That's kind of confusing, because Kilby Road kind of comes down, then it goes into a gentle curve, but the name of the road changes, because Cahoon kind of takes a sharp turn. So don't get misled that we have two roads. It's really one continuous road that changes names just before the end of our subdivision. But what we will be doing that is a part of your plan that I think matters today, it really matters more as to when we get into the depths of what we are trying to accomplish with whether we deserve to have a subdivision here safely, is we're making major improvements to Lake Cahoon Road and Lake Kilby Road. We will be bringing the road as it fronts on our neighborhood all the way up to every stand that the city would require, so it'll basically look like Pitch Kettle Road as you're coming past West Haven Lakes in that area. Nice, flat, wide road with nice, wide turn lanes. Once you get to the end of our development, we will improve the road for over 3,000 feet, all the way to where Lake Kilby Road meets Lake Kilby Road at its meeting with Pitch Kettle Farms. So what is now Lake Kilby Road, a nasty little rascal, will be a nice, flat road, 20 feet wide, all the way down between our subdivision and all the way to going towards the fire station. And going back right in front of our subdivision, you'll have something that is completely a modern roadway. So we feel that having the two entrances on Kilby and Cahoon are actually a better option, a safer option, and I think that the people of both subdivisions would appreciate it. I do think that there is room to grant a variance in these circumstances, because I do not believe that what we are requesting in any way affects any kind of health, safety, or general welfare of the people. And this was voted on unanimously by the people of Pitch Kettle Farms, and so we're supporting them in that respect. And we would respectfully ask that you grant this variance for the benefit of Pitch Kettle Farms, because one day, I don't know what's going to happen to us later today or what, but it's going to be developed, and those people don't want that road cutting through. They've been there a long time. So I think we can maybe put that one and nip that one in the bud right now, today, and let those people know, you're not going to have a major road, that road's not going to be a major thoroughfare in the future. Let's give those people what they're asking for, and we're prepared to work with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Is anyone else to speak in favor? Come on up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Glenn McCloskey. I'm the president of the Pitch Kettle Farms HOA. We're a community of 112 homes. We've got 105 occupied, I think, now. We're on half-acre to one-acre lots, started in 2006. We've got a mix of young families, middle-aged, and some retired. The main street in our community is Pitch Kettle Farms Lane. It ends in a cul-de-sac, as you've heard, just north of the proposed development. We've presented the commission with a petition with 122 signatures on it. Everybody in Pitch Kettle Farms is against extending Pitch Kettle Farms Lane. If the zoning remains like it is, we would be expecting about 35 homes on that 106 acres. If the zoning changes, we're looking at 225 on less than quarter-acre lots. So this number of homes, 225, could potentially triple the traffic on Pitch Kettle Farms Lane. Some of them are probably going to go the other way, but maybe not. That's a lot of traffic in a residential neighborhood with small children, school buses, and old people. We've met with the developers and the city. We've requested that the extension not be required. That's what this variance is all about. If the variance is approved and Pitch Kettle Farms is not extended, then we are not going to oppose this zoning change. If, however, this is not granted, and the city decides that Pitch Kettle Farms Lane has to be extended, we will very vigorously oppose the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Is anyone else speaking in favor of this request? We have two minutes left. Here and then, is there anyone here in opposition to this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brian Harris. I'm a Suffolk resident, small business owner. I live at 2455 Lake Cahoon Road. My home and farm are about 2,000 feet from this area that we're talking about. I speak in opposition to this request to grant a variance of connectivity requirements for subdivision and support Planning's recommendation of denial. I'd like to ask anyone in attendance today who also opposes this variance to please I think for the record, you should note that the majority of the people in attendance are in opposition of this variance. Mr. McCloskey?
Sir? It's understandable that the residents of Pitch Kettle Farms don't want more traffic through their neighborhood. As noted in your petition to Planning, quote, "We didn't move here with any anticipation of this happening." But the same is true for me, my friends, my family, and my neighbors, who also have no desire for more traffic on our already dangerous, narrow, ditch-lined roads. It's nice to know that the developer reached out to talk to Pitch Kettle Farms, but they made, I'm not aware of any effort for them to reach out to me or any of my neighbors to discuss this plan. That's unfortunate. But as citizens, we shouldn't have to rely on a developer to ensure the safety of our roads and neighborhoods. We should be able to trust our city planners to put the impact of the citizens who already lived here first. Slightly off-script, that number of 5,000 feet is wrong. I disagree with that. And I think throughout these next two topics, you're going to see stark contrast from what is in reality, what is on the road, what is out there in units, measures, distance, and numbers that are very different than what is being presented. The actual distance between this proposed connector is not 5,000 feet, it's closer to 3,400. Details matter. Details matter. As noted in the staff report regarding this variance in reference to Pitch Kettle Farms, there is, and I quote, "adequate area and no physical limitations preventing the street from being extended. All residential subdivisions in the City of Suffolk should be held to the same standard." The staff report also states that in the event that Lake Cahoon or Kilby Road are blocked, the residents of the proposed new subdivision and motorists traveling through the area would have no nearby alternative routes. "Without a full roadway connection, delivery searches such as UPS and FedEx would afford fewer travel options," end quote. Staff, let's also not forget school buses, Amazon trucks, utilities, recycling, sanitation. This area that we're talking about has many active farms, and it is not uncommon to share the road with heavy and wide, large farming equipment. According to the V.Traffic webpage, the current average daily traffic volume on Kilby and Cahoon is about 1,200 vehicle trips per day. The staff report represents that according to the Traffic Impact Study for the concurrent rezoning requests, that there's a combined 386 AM and PM trips to be anticipated. But this staff report fails to mention that in the same traffic impact study, it also projects that the average daily traffic generated by these proposed 225 new homes will be 2,193 trips. Through that quick math, this is a 183% increase in the traffic already on these roads. That's more than double. More than double. That's a lot of traffic on these roads. In my previous life, I served in the Air Force as a special tactics operator. One of my trained skills was airfield survey, such that I could go places where planes might not be able to land, make accurate measurements, like on a road or some ditch trail in the middle of the woods, and take measurements to make sure planes could safely land. With that, I'd say I'm highly qualified in conducting accurate geospatial measurements. This past week, my friends and I, neighbors, conducted an assessment of 25 random spots along the proposed impact Lake Kilby-Lake Cahoon roads. In contrast to what was provided, Kilby and Lake, along Lake Kilby and Cahoon roads, there's approximately 5,617 feet of rural roadway with no curb. We found that the average paved width is 17.5 feet. The widest portion of Kilby and Cahoon is the intersection of Kilby and Cahoon, measuring just over 28 feet. There are several portions of the road that measure less than 16 feet. The narrowest portion of this discussed road is less than 14.6 feet wide. In comparison, the average width of Pitch Kettle Farms Lane is 30 feet. Take a moment to think about that, what's in front of us. We're considering blocking traffic on a viable, established road and forcing it down a public utility that's less than half as wide, lined with ditches. You guys know how wide a school bus is? How about a peanut combine? How about the single fire truck at Engine Station 4? You guys know how wide that is? It barely fits down the road. I encourage you, take a short drive over to Lake Cahoon-Kilby Roads. If you can find a place to park, which will be a challenge, step out, take a look. Consider, what is 183% increase of traffic going to look like on this road? We don't need this in our neighborhoods. We don't need this in our neighborhoods. To conclude, if this variance is granted, allowing exception from the standards of connectivity, you not only establish a precedent, there will also be committing 100% of this new traffic down our already narrow roads. For all these reasons, we recommend denial. Thank you.
Harris, is anyone else speaking in opposition? Is anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name is Evelyn, excuse me, Evelyn Jones. While I live in the northeastern sector of Suffolk, which I dearly loved the way it was when I moved there, I am praying that the same thing doesn't happen in the southwest, where I have friends. It should be left as zoned. It should not be changed. The roads need improvement, even if it's not for the residences, but just for what this gentleman has said. You've got farm equipment there because it's farmland, and it should remain farmland. It doesn't need to be anything else. We don't need to cover the whole city of Suffolk with rooftops, like has been said before. That's what we were told in the northeast, that the city wanted to make rooftops, and we're getting them. We don't want them. When I moved out there 33 years ago, I loved the fact that there were wildlife, that there was farmland, and we had a road that was way too small. But we weren't going to complain because it was nice. I lived on a dead-end main road. Well, now that main road is being built with houses and houses and houses. And the main road is still not have the capacity to handle the traffic. And that's what's happening in the southwest. You don't have roads. The city has not made the roads comparable to growth. And until the city does that, you should not change the zoning. Leave it alone.
Here and then, Mr. Ferguson, do you have any rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few observations. I'm glad Mr. Harris brought up the width of the road, because the main thing I emphasized was, one of the proffers that we will be making when we get that far, is that we will be widening Lake Cahoon or Lake Kilby to a minimum of 20 feet and flattening the road out at all spaces, all the way up to where it is already wide. The part that is at 1,800 feet that runs in front of our subdivision, or 2,000 that runs in front of what would be our subdivision, will be brought up to completely modern standards with turn lanes. It'll look just like Pitch Kettle Road in front of Heron's Point. You know, if you go back 15, 20 years and look at Pitch Kettle Road back in the day, the people didn't want Pitch Kettle Road developed because the road wasn't adequate. Look at Pitch Kettle Road today, it's a very easy-to-travel road. Progress happens. We are not in the southwest part of the city yet. We are less than two miles from the core of the city where we're talking about putting this. It may seem like the country, but it's less than two miles from the core of the city. The city is going to grow. We have long-term planning that we have done, and this, our plan to do this fits into the long-term planning. The 2035 plan puts us right doing what we are asking to do. And we're not asking for a change in short-term planning, we're asking that we follow the long-term planning, and that is what we have attempted to do. I think that pretty much covers it. I think we've got it on that. I think we've covered the points they hit, and we certainly would appreciate you letting the folks in Pitch Kettle Farms keep their road private coming into their neighborhood. We would ask that we be allowed to build our neighborhood. We would ask that we be allowed to build our neighborhood without utilizing the extension through Pitch Kettle Farms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll get things started. I have been out there several times. I've driven up Lake Cahoon from Roy and Ricky's, made the curve around to Lake Kilby, gone all the way up to Pitch Kettle Road, and then turned on Pitch Kettle Road and came back down Pitch Kettle Farms' road lane, and I forget which one it is. You know, I can sympathize with the people at Pitch Kettle Farms. If that is a long entranceway road, and if this development is put in there, I can see where, just looking at the layout of it, where potentially a significant number of the new residents would want to use Pitch Kettle Farm Lane to exit out to get to Pitch Kettle, to get to Pitch Kettle Road. I don't think that would necessarily help the situation there. It would make it for a long, you know, even longer access road. I think having the two entranceways off of Lake Kilby would adequately suffice it, so I would be in favor of approving this variance. I can make it a motion, but I'm sure there's other people that want to have discussion of the motion.
Okay.
Also, may I get a second?
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just make some comments, because we've got two items here, and they are linked, but they are somewhat different in nature. Obviously, the city's approach to this, and I talked to Kevin earlier today, just to make sure I was right on exactly what happens, because I believe if we go along and approve this, then the city is for denying the other program. Have I got that right, or backwards? If we approve this request, then the city would, has taken a position of denial of the subdivision. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, it's reverse. So, there's a proffer contained in the rezoning request associated with this that mentions this very issue. Staff has recommended denial of the variance request because it just does not align with the criteria. However, the 2035 comprehensive plan supports the rezoning request, exclusive of that proffer regarding the connection. So, if you were to approve it, that kind of paves the way for acceptance of that proffer as made by the applicant.
Right, right.
I have a question for Mr. Ferguson.
Ferguson, if you come up to the mic, please.
And you probably could have answered it from there. Whether we deny this or approve this, there will still be two entrances on Lake Kilby Road, right?
That, yes, ma'am, that would be the plan.
Lake Kilby and Lake Cahoon.
Right now, that would be the plan. We think that's the best design, is having two entrances onto Lake Cahoon Road, because that is the best traffic flow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. May I ask, I didn't plan on speaking. I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Wyman or city staff, and I guess I'm jumping the gun, but I won't make sure I understand. If it remains RE, that's the current zoning rate, will the connectivity requirement be still in place if the RE is developed?
If the RE is developed as a matter of right, and this variance is not approved, the connection to Pitch Kettle Farm Lane would still be required in accordance with our street connectivity standards.
So regardless, is the policy of the city to connect Pitch Kettle Farm, that's the road, right, Pitch Kettle Farm, right, connect that road to whatever new development is coming?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I move for the denial of SBV 2022-003.
Second that motion.
A motion for denial of SB, SBV 2022-003 by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in the motion? Here and then? Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please. You set for the vote.
No means yes, right?
Say that again?
No means yes.
No, if you want, if you vote further than I'll, that's going to be a yes.
All right, commissioners, please vote. All right, Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of 6 to 2 to deny the variance request.
Okay, that motion failed. Actually, the motion did not fail, as staff recommended for denial. The next item on our agenda would be the same property, but for a rezoning request, RZN 2021-00018. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-0018, conditional, Lake Kilby shores. This is submitted by Matt Howard, Lake Kilby Properties LLC applicant on behalf of Bob Arnett Coastal Virginia Partners LLC, contract purchaser, and Harvey Sternett, attorney-in fact for Flojo Properties LLC, and Diane Sternett et al., property owners in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone the official map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from RE, Rural Estate Zoning District, to RM, Residential Medium Density Zoning District, conditional, for property located at zoning map 33, parcels 47, 48, 48A, 49, and zoning map 34, parcel 26. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned RE, Rural Estate Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as a part of the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to a rezoning request, RZN 2021-018, conditional. Once again, staff planner Amy Boekie will make staff's report.
Thank you, and good afternoon. As stated, the nature of this request is to conditionally rezone 106 acres to the RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. This site is situated within the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District and is located approximately five minutes or roughly two to three miles from the downtown core. Similar to the subdivision variance application, this request pertains to five parcels also. The surrounding zoning consists of a combination of residential low-density to the north, rural estate zoning, commerce park zoning, and heavy industrial zoning in the area. The purpose of this request is to allow for a maximum of 225 single-family detached homes, which has been proffered, for a gross density of roughly 2.1 dwelling units per acre, rather than the existing zoning of RE, which would allow for one home for every three acres. The suburban use district, as called for in the 2035 comprehensive plan, is intended to primarily consist of residential subdivisions at densities of 1 to 5 units per acre, and this request is in the middle of that range. While the applicant proposes the RM or medium-density district that would normally allow 4.4 units per acre and be on the higher end of that spectrum, they have proffered a lower unit count to where their proposed density would be more compatible to the surrounding area. The comprehensive plan sets specific themes and policies related to land use, transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application. The first policy, Policy 2-1, states to keep development focused in the designated growth areas of the city. The proposed rezoning from rural estate to residential medium would result in an increase in the permitted residential density within the central growth area, at an appropriate scale and intensity within close proximity to our downtown core. Policy 2-2 states to assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner, and Policy 2-4 states to promote compatibility in land use. The surrounding area to the north and northeast is comprised of low-to-medium-density subdivisions, including Pitch Kettle Farms, the Preserve at Lake Mead, Foxville Meadows, et cetera, that are nearby. The proposed rezoning, in conjunction with a proffered number of dwelling units, is expected to continue predictable and orderly development, though the area right now is rural in nature. Further, the rural estate zoning district that's presently there at this site is more compatible with a different use district, according to the comprehensive plan. And so the proposed rezoning aligns with the suburban use district. No rezoning request or proffer amendment should be approved that would create a reduction in the levels of service standards for any public facility that is impacted. With regards to utilities, the public facilities report provided by the applicant addresses availability of water and sewer. A pump station will need to be constructed as part of the development. A city water model will also need to be performed. However, despite those studies, the Department of Public Utilities does not oppose the rezoning or foresee capacity issues at this time. The Department of Public Works has reservations regarding downstream impacts of the proposed development. The applicant will be required to address stormwater management during the engineering and site design of the project, which usually does not occur at the time of rezoning. The proposed 225-unit development is expected to add roughly 165 peak AM trips to the area and roughly 221 peak PM trips to nearby roadways. Traffic engineering reviewed the traffic impact study submitted with the application, and after collaboration with the applicant, has determined that the summary portion of the traffic study is acceptable. The applicant's rezoning exhibit above depicts the boundaries of the five parcels to be reclassified as required as part of our application materials. Now to discuss the impacts on Suffolk public schools, the applicant has proffered eight conditions in support of this request. This particular slide is Slide 1 of 2 of their proffer statement, and this first proffer depicted above, while it is long, it does adequately address the school impacts from the new subdivision. This property is currently assigned to Elephants Fork Elementary School, Kings Fork Middle School, and Kings Fork High School. The developer has given credit for the school impacts that would be associated with a byright development under the existing zoning. After subtracting the students that may be generated by a byright development, the net impact of this rezoning is expected to generate 34 elementary school students, 18 middle school students, and 24 high school students. After considering our current student enrollment provided by the school system, committed development, and the net students that are expected to be generated, there is insufficient capacity at all school levels. The developer has voluntarily proffered the recommended amounts to offset their impacts, which, when divided up among the number of dwelling units, this equates to a contribution of roughly $13,000 per dwelling unit, or a combined total of roughly $2.9 million for the entire subdivision. In summary, the impacts to public schools have been mitigated by the developer. Proffers number three through six pertain to the square footage of the homes and the building materials that they would utilize. Proffer number seven commits the applicant to making roadway improvements outlined in their traffic study. And to highlight those really quickly, those traffic improvements include turn lanes. Along their direct frontage of Lake Cahoon and Lake Kilby Road, which is about 2,200 linear feet, they would be installing curb gutter, pipe drainage, mill, and overlay. In addition to what is currently their road frontage, north of their road frontage, which is actually off-site of the property that they are under contract to purchase, for roughly 3,200 linear feet, Lake Kilby Road would be improved to remove the crown or turtleback that exists on the road currently, and they would mill and overlay that road to a minimum pavement width of 20 feet off-site of their property. At the Holland Road and Lake Cahoon Road intersection, an exclusive westbound turn lane would be provided. And with regards to Pitch Kettle Road and the Route 58 junction, the developer voluntarily proffered to contribute $25,000 to assist with funding a preliminary engineering study to assess possible improvements to the junction with the bypass. Lastly, proffer number eight states that the developer shall construct a connection to Pitch Kettle Farm Lane for the purpose of emergency vehicles only. Proffer number eight speaks specifically to the subdivision variance that was considered by you all this afternoon. The variance, being that it was not supported, it would not be appropriate to incorporate proffer number eight as part of the rezoning if that is planning commission's wishes. In summary, the proposed rezoning itself, from RE, Rural Estate Zoning District to Residential Medium Density Zoning District, is found to be compatible with surrounding development patterns and consistent with the vision for the suburban use district as outlined by the 2035 comprehensive plan. Overall, the proposed density of roughly two units an acre is suitable for this site, given its proximity to the downtown core and access to 58. As currently structured, staff has recommended denial of the rezoning request in the submitted proffers, specifically due to proffer number eight, as it relates to the subdivision variance. However, should City Council or this body, in their recommendation to City Council, move to approve the concurrent subdivision variance request that allows for that limited road connection to be made, acceptance of proffer eight could be included, and staff would recommend approval of the rezoning request and that particular proffer. Overall, from a compatibility perspective, the rezoning complies with the existing development patterns and the vision for the comprehensive plan. And I will stand to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing on this item, the last item will be going to City Council on November 16th with the results of this public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Greer Ferguson. My office is 332 West Constance Road here in the City of Suffolk. We would, out of respect to our neighbors, before this project moves on, we would respectfully ask for a postponement so we could meet with our neighbors at Pitch Kettle Farms to discuss other things that maybe we could do to work with them. If not, we'll just move forward down the road. But we would prefer to work with our neighbors, at least try to before, because the working at this point has been on trying to get the variance, which we did not get at this level. And as a result of that, we would prefer to meet with them and come back to you without that on the agenda. If you choose not to grant the postponement, I'll be ready to try to put our evidence on, or whatever you'd like to hear. Thank you very much.
I would turn to the legal.
So, the public hearing has been opened, and there is not a procedure in the UDO for amendments at this stage of the process. So, the public hearing should continue on. The Planning Commission could choose to table it after the public hearing is closed, but you can't, it's open, so we need to continue with the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you.
I think if we're going to go through, putting everything on, we might as well, whatever you find, is we'll just go with it today. How about that? So what we're proposing is, we're proposing to rezone approximately 106 acres and end up with 225 houses in this piece of property that's located on Lake Kilby with a portion of it on Lake Cahoon Road. of it on Lake Kahoon Road. And what we are proposing to do is consistent with the long-term growth plans of the city of Suffolk. As was pointed out by staff, we fit into, we fit into all the little boxes that you would want to fit into. We're not, we're right in the city almost, by today's standards. So the question becomes, what is wrong with us being there? Obviously, there's a lot of, cities getting a lot of pressure not to approve anything nowadays. And, I mean, that's what the reality is, and we have to face that as developers. I do think that this is a beautiful piece of property that we are proposing. I do think that we have already spoken to you about the improvements that we would be making to Lake Kilby Road, and then on out to Lake Kahoon. So all this talk about 15 feet here, 17 feet there, that will not be a reality when we finish. The minimum width will be 20 feet without any turtleback or crown in the road. All of the property in front of our subdivision immediately will be much even wider and fancier than that. This is going to, we are going to make a major improvement to Lake Kilby Road. I've been driving that road all my life, and it is a nasty little rascal. But it won't be like that after we make our improvements. And we will be able to handle the traffic. All you have to do is go to Pitch Kettle and see how the first part of Pitch Kettle, with all the growth that's taking place there on the town side of the bypass, is easily handling the traffic. And I believe the same thing will be true for us. You know, if you go down, if you come out of Suffolk at Hardee's and you head out towards the golf course, and then you go on out to the bypass on Holland Road, what do you see? You see nothing. Why? Because nobody's using that area. We are now going to an area that's gonna have rooftops and a lot. I mean, most of our people that go to this subdivision we are proposing, I'm telling you, are not gonna go to Pitch Kettle Road. They're gonna come back to Holland Road and utilize an area of town that is, for all practical purposes, dead. That shopping center is dead. What will it take to bring some of this area back? People ask me all the time, why is this area dead? I'll tell you why. No people ride down the road. So developments like our proposed development can help bring some vitality back to that portion of town. And so it takes rooftops sometimes to create vitality. And I would, as a long-term citizen, and as a proponent of this, but more as a citizen, that area needs some, needs some working on. And I think that what we are proposing to do is a first step to bring that part of town back to life. So I hope you can look past the arguments of traffic, et cetera. People are coming to Suffolk. We are a desirable place. The issue is how we do it. You're not gonna, in this piece of property, these people that have owned it for long periods of time and now want to retire and cash out, they don't want to have 10 houses on their property, and that's not what our long-term planning calls for. Our long-term planning is designed to create harmony and try to prevent people from just scattering out. This stuff of scattering out all over everywhere, and everybody getting their acre and being happy, that's a thing of the 60s and 70s and 80s, and it's history. It's not sustainable as a country. It is not sustainable. The only way you can prevent that is will be to tell your children to stop having babies, I'm telling you. As we have growth, as the population increases, people have to have a place to live, and there is a limit on the amount of land available. The only, the only way you can do that is have denser growth, which is, excuse me, recommended by your city staff, not recommended by me, not recommended by the developers, but has been recommended by the long-term planners of this city, and approved by your city council. So when you hear all of these protests, we are in an area that has been designated to do exactly what we are trying to do. We are not going outside of the bounds set by the long-term plan. We are playing within the rules of the game, and we would respectfully ask that when you look back at what's been told to you through all of these conversations, that access through Pitch Kettle Farms or no access, that you approve this development. And I know the people at Pitch Kettle Farms aren't gonna be happy with that variance ruling, and I guess we'll go back to City Council, and maybe they'll give a different ruling on it. But you made your point on that, and I would respectfully ask that regardless of that, that you allow these nice people who own this land right next to Pitch Kettle Farms be able to develop their land in the same manner that their neighbors were able to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We have a few minutes left for the, for the proponents. Anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Here are none. Is anyone here speaking in opposition?
Commissioners, staff, hello again. My name is Brian Harris. I live at 2455 Lake Kahoon Road, and I oppose this request to increase, to rezone 106 acres off of Kilby and Kahoon Roads from rural estate to residential medium. I'd like to ask anyone in attendance who also opposes this rezoning to please stand. Commissioners, I think the record should note that the majority of the citizens in attendance are in opposition of this rezoning request. I want to start with asking, why is this area dead? I'll tell you why the area is dead. It's because of the debacle off of 58. People start coming down that road and they stop. That's why they're not coming down that road. It's not because of a lack of roofs and whatnot. I've got a piece that I'm gonna submit for the record here. I had a good conversation with Kevin about the method at which this and the previous agenda item were advertised, that I do, sir, think needs to be considered, as I do believe it was noncompliant with code. To that, "Growth must be measured and in balance with local infrastructure, environment, and community." Community! Our main concerns about this possible rezoning are: traffic, road safety, the character and spirit of our locale, and overcrowded and poorly maintained elementary school, public safety, and flooding. As I spoke to on the first agenda item, according to the VDOT traffic webpage, the average daily trips are 1,200 on these two roads that we're talking about. The traffic impact study, from what I can tell, took zero consideration for the Kilby-Kahoon intersection or any of the traffic that travels west out of that intersection. The staff report does make note that there are a total of 386 AM/PM trips during peak hours. But again, it didn't consider or make reference to the 2,193 trips that these 225 homes would generate. No change in the math, that's 183% increase of traffic on our roads. I'd like to emphasize that Kilby and Kahoon Roads are rural roads and perfectly fit the definition of such in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which states, and I quote, "They generally have narrow lanes and are adequate for servicing existing or forecasted volumes of traffic." The Comprehensive Plan and VDOT both classify Kilby and Kahoon as collector roads. The VDOT Road Design Manual notes that lanes on collector roads must be a minimum of 11 feet wide with four to 10 feet of unobstructed paved shoulders. VDOT also recommends that if an agricultural equipment are present, they recommend that each individual lane width be 12 feet. A proffer of 20 feet provided by the developer is insufficient. We are also concerned with the stark contrast between the mostly rural estate district and these high-density subdivisions. Between the staff report and the supporting documentations that have been submitted here, there are very vague claims and much that is inconsistent, and it's not exactly clear to me or the public what this end state of the development will actually look like. As an example, the staff report analysis states that the rezoning request would generate a gross density of roughly 2.12 homes per acre. But that's confusing when you look at the details. As an example, the conceptual master plan notes, rather shows, that the proposed open, the proposed total open space would be 30.6 acres. This translates to a real home density of approximately 3.2 homes per acre. The EEQ Virginia Runoff Compliance Worksheet that was submitted shows that there would be 57.21, that's pretty precise, acres of managed turf and exactly 50 acres of impervious cover. Me doing that math, that tells me that there would be approximately 4.5 homes of real home density. The staff report narrative on page 12 says, and I quote, "Due to the low density of the applicant is not submitting a proffer, limiting the number of units in this project." In the same staff report, there's a voluntary proffer from the applicant that says that there're not gonna be more than 225 homes. So is it 225, or are we noncommittal? Those two statements seem to be in contrast with each other. Proffer 3 also states that each unit will have a 1,850-foot minimum square footage space. In contrast, the physical impact analysis uses 2,850. Which number is it? One helps the citizen and looks good in presentation, the other helps the developer. What the community really wants to know here is what the real density of these homes are gonna be. When I drive down Lake Kilby Road, when you guys drive down Lake Kilby Road, are we gonna see four, maybe five homes crammed together on a single acre? Clustered homes don't fit this area. Even though it's two miles away, that's not the character of this area. And it's not in keeping with Kilby or Lake Kahoon Road, what's already there. One of the principal values listed on the 2035 Comp Plan says that the city will, and I quote, "Enhance the various unique characters and development patterns, such that existing residents, existing residents, can continue to enjoy the areas they love while future residents can enjoy the beautiful landscapes that exist today." At what point does the suburban use district boundary line stop encroaching on what we love and our beautiful landscapes? Our schools are also a concern. Elephants Fork Elementary School is projected to be at 111% capacity by 2024, and this number does not take into account current impending developments already in the district. This is especially concerned because the facility condition assessment of Elephants Fork is poor. Elephants Fork is also highlighted on a list of, quote, "Schools that need the most improvement." Just because they proffer money, I don't understand how that mitigates the problem. Having more money doesn't make the problem go away. What are we doing to fix this? We're also worried about the capacity of Fire Station 4. Can a single engine support this rapid growth? That's all that's there, one truck. Our first responders are already stretched thin, and it will be years before any upgrades are made to this station and before any new stations are constructed. The Suffolk Resilience Plan says, and I quote, "The city continues to grow. An increase in flooding and natural hazards has accompanied this growth and is projected to continue to increase." The plan continues by saying that, quote, "Flooding and coastal storms are considered," and I emphasize this, "the most significant hazard that threatens the city of Suffolk." I'd like to point out that this area already has drainage issues and is prone to flooding. Just a couple of years ago, we had some serious flooding, and my property in particular was flooded due to extreme rains in the poorly managed overflow ditches. The pictures of my farm are included in your staff report. Feet of water traveled down Lake Kahoon. We went water skiing in the road. That sounds fun, but that's what happened. In regards to stormwater management, your staff report notes, and I quote, "The Department of Public Works has considerable reservations regarding the downstream impact of the proposed development associated with this rezoning application due to the proximity of existing residential structures." Why am I gonna start taking flooding serious around here? Just because we draw a line on a map and call it the growth area, that doesn't protect us from natural disasters or flooding. Lastly, I think it's important to highlight that the developer has had more than a year to prepare for this moment, more than a year. The citizens have had 14 days. 14 days, he's had more than a year. There's many documents, reports, filings, that were issued with this that includes errors, contradictions, and inconsistencies. The details matter. The small details matter, and we should not accept this. For this reason, I recommend remote vote denial.
My name is Sydney Grabner-French, and I'm a state-accredited civil engineer who has an extensive background in land development, roadway design, stormwater management, utility design, and project management. I am also a Suffolk resident and neighbor of the subject parcels, and I am not in favor of the proposed rezoning of the 106 acres on Lake Kilby Road and Lake Kahoon Road from rural estate to residential medium density. After reviewing the documents provided to the public, I have a few concerns. My first concern is the impact that this proposed development will have on our current infrastructure. In the considerations and conclusions portion of the staff report, it stated that 3,200 linear feet along Lake Kilby Road will be improved to remove the crown and will be milled and overlaid to provide 20 feet of pavement width. A pavement width of 20 feet does not meet any requirements in the Suffolk Public Facilities Manual or the VDOT Road Design Manual. Lake Kilby Road currently experiences drainage issues, and given the information provided, there is no plan to address these issues. The current geometric conditions of Lake Kilby Road are unsafe for the current average daily traffic, and the improvements that are proposed will not address these issues. The proposed development proposes two entrances along Lake Kilby Road and Lake Kahoon Road, which will increase the average daily traffic on these roads substantially, and given the information provided, this is not taken accounted for. The documents provided do not give any indications of improving Lake Kahoon Road, a road that has similar unsafe geometric conditions, and will be negatively impacted by this development as well. A traffic impact study was performed in the subject area, however, critical intersections such as Lake Kilby Road and Lake Kahoon Road intersection were not included. It is also important to note that this traffic study was only performed for four hours. The VDOT Traffic Impact Analysis Regulations state that data should include traffic counts over a 24-hour period. The traffic impact study is simply inadequate and does not show the true impact that this development will have on our infrastructure. Although this traffic impact study was performed for the proposed development in question, it is important to take into account the surrounding developments in the area that are yet to be constructed. What impact do these developments have on our infrastructure? Have these developments been accounted for when analyzing our current infrastructure and the subpar improvements that are proposed? As someone who works in the transportation industry, the $25,000 the developer has promised to put towards a preliminary engineering study just barely scratches the surface for these improvements that need to be made to our current infrastructure due to the impacts of the proposed development. How much taxpayer money are we spending in order to address the issues caused by this proposed development? A major concern I have is the last point, sorry, the last bullet point of Policy 2-4, Action 2-4D, in the staff report provided to the public. The statement reads, "Due to this rather low comparative density, the applicant is not submitting a proffer limiting the number of units in the project. The final number of units will be determined during the engineering phase." The developer is currently proposing 225 units, however, this could reach up to 515 units per the residential medium zoning allowances. The calculations provided in the Public Facilities Report for the Lake Kilby Road subdivision do not account for the potential of 515 units. The Public Facilities Report states that the development consists of 225 units will have a projected water domestic demand of 156 gallons per minute. If the number of units increases to 515 units, then this creates a projected water domestic demand of 357 gallons per minute. The report also states that peak sewage flow for this proposed development consisting of 225 units is 121 gallons per minute. However, 515 units creates 277 gallons per minute peak sewage flow. Given this information, how can we accurately analyze our existing utilities and their ability to handle this proposed development? How much taxpayer money are we really gonna spend in order to support this proposed development? Anyone who is familiar with the Lake Kilby and Lake Kahoon area knows that this area is subject to flooding. The additional impervious area that this development will produce will negatively impact the area unless these surrounding drainage issues are addressed. The Virginia Runoff Reduction Method calculations provided in the Public Facilities Report only accounts for a drainage area of 107 acres, which is the project site. These calculations do not account for the surrounding drainage areas that currently outfall into this site. The intersection of Lake Kilby Road and Lake Kahoon Road currently outfalls onto the project site, and there are no proposed improvements in this area. In conclusion, this proposed development and rezoning of the subject parcels will have a heavy impact on the city's existing infrastructure. a heavy impact on the city's existing infrastructure and utilities. I would also like to point out that the developer has had over a year to prepare for today's meeting, and the taxpaying citizens have had only 14 days to wrap their heads around this. For all of these reasons and many more, please vote to recommend the denial of the rezoning. Respectfully, Sidney Grabner.
The time is up, sir. Hold on, Mr. McCloskey. Sir, you have your seat, please. Commissioners, do we want to extend this portion of the public hearing, or do we want to put a caveat for the entire public hearing?
Can we get a handle on how many more people are wanting to speak?
How many more people want to speak in opposition? Give you a total of five minutes have been recommended. Do we need to vote on this, Commissioners?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay.
Yeah.
Make it as an informal motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend the public hearing by 15 minutes.
Second the motion.
You got a motion and a second to extend the public hearing for 15 minutes.
Is that per side for the opponent and the proponents?
Yes, that 15 minutes get added to the proponents' side. Okay, Ms. McCloskey, I think you're... Vote, I'm sorry. Take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, I find myself on the other side now. Now that the variance has been denied, the Pitchkettle Farm Homeowners Association strongly opposes this zoning change. The existing zoning would result in construction of 35 homes. We're talking here about 225, or we just heard potentially even more than that. That's going to be quarter-acre lots maximum instead of three-acre lots. That's a lot of traffic. We've also heard about how rotten Lake Kilby Road and Lake Cahoon Road are. I can't deny that. I would expect, if I lived in this new subdivision, I would come right up that nice 30-foot-wide Pitchkettle Farm lane rather than go down Lake Kilby. That means that we're going to have as much as three times as much traffic if it's 225 homes, as many as six times as much traffic if it's the higher number, the maximum number. That's crazy. We strongly oppose this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. I might add that we had one person in opposition to extending this public hearing. I think that was, I'm not sure who it was. Commissioner Goodman, I'm sorry. Come on up, sir.
My name is Christopher Dove. I live at 852 Colonel Mead Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. UDO Section 31601, Adequate Public Facilities, states, "The purpose and intent is to ensure that the public facilities needed to support new development meet or exceed the level of service standards established by this section." It also says, "To ensure that no rezoning, site plans, or subdivision plots are approved, which would cause a reduction in level of service for any public facilities below the adequate levels of service established by this section." The city planners have already stated that we are below the standards set by the standards for schools. It also says, "To ensure that the adequate public facilities needed to support new development are available concurrent with the impacts of such development, not mitigated, but have to be concurrent." The proffered conditions do not create schools concurrent with the impacts. Planning... Sorry about that. Until the new schools are actually built, no rezonings, site plans, or subdivisions can be approved according to the UDO. Approval of this rezoning is a violation of Section 31.601 of the UDO. Staff's recommendation of approval of this violation is a violation of Section 31601. Section 3130310 states, "Violating, causing, or permitting the violation of, or otherwise disregarding any of the provisions of this ordinance by any person, firm, or corporation, whether a principal, an agent, an owner, a leasing, an employee, or other similar position, is unlawful." Don't violate the law. Thank you.
Evelyn Jones, and while I live in the northeastern section of Suffolk, I consider the southwestern my neighbor. I have friends there. It's a beautiful, beautiful area, so let's try to leave it that way. Leave it with the larger homes, more like estates and what have you. You talk about the three-acre estates. It should be. It shouldn't be these little puny lots like they're building all over the place where you got 15 feet between house to house. You can't even take a car in your backyard unless you're on good terms with your next-door neighbor. That's what's being built up in the northeast section, and that's what I'm seeing happening in the southwest section. Don't let that happen. It doesn't need to be. It's going to look like Virginia Beach. It's going to be nothing but wall-to-wall houses and wall-to-wall pavement. That's not why I moved to Suffolk. I moved to Suffolk because it was country. I unfortunately happened to pick the wrong area. I should have gone southwest, but it's looking like southwest is going to head that way. You don't need to have that many houses. Also, they keep talking the 20-foot width roads. According to the V.Road Manual, and I know because I'm a retired engineer that used to do plans and review plans, the minimum width of a road, two-way traffic, is 24 feet. Each lane should be 11 feet wide or 12 feet wide. So what's this 20 feet? Do we just kind of throw those four feet to the wind? No. If they're going to make improvements, it's got to be 24. That's what the V.Road Manual says. I don't understand some of this other stuff that they're talking about, because when I reviewed plans for the City of Suffolk and for Virginia Beach, we didn't allow small roads, we didn't tiny roads. Also, no one's brought up the fact that these neighborhoods are going to be built adjacent to water reservoirs. Have the owners of the water reservoirs been informed of what's happening? Do we need more houses to have runoff from fertilizer and what have you to destroy the property? Now, I understand farms do produce more pollutants than just about anything else, and your cows are the worst, but we don't need to have people that's got to fertilize every week in order to have a green yard. No. Leave the property alone. Leave the zoning alone. We don't need to be messing with it. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, before you leave the podium, give us your address, please.
4921 Fennell, and that's with an F-E-N-N-E-L-L lane. I live in Glen Forest.
Thank you. Is anyone else to speak in opposition? We have a few minutes left.
Commissioners and Chairman. My name's Chess Harris. I live at 323 Tyndles Court in North Suffolk. The rooftop explosion that she talked about, I'm in the middle of that. I live out on the Nazman area. But for those of you that drive Bridge Road, it's a constipated nightmare, which has, I think, evidences the absence of a great infrastructure support. Lots of great roads in terms of signs and pretty lights that aren't synchronized and good turnoff lanes, pretty in front of the development, but the infrastructure connecting those development areas is decades behind. You know, it used to take, I've been here a long time, it used to be a few minutes to get down Bridge Road, close Monterey Merrimack, which happens at least once or twice a week, and it turns into an hour just to get to Crittintown Road. Our family has a farm on Lake Cahoon. I drive through the floodwaters every time we have a light rain on ditched roads, which barely can have one vehicle pass. The rooftop syndrome of what's exploding in the north with lipstick on the pig to put nice covering on the bridges, to put paint on the roads, and extra traffic lights so we can get people in and out, doesn't fix the problem. The problem we are having right now, add the Port 460 project, I sat through all those hearings, over 1,000 more vehicles, and we all know water goes the route of least resistance and peaks. The whole complex where this is now is going to be a feeder road network for those Amazon trucks that like Willroy Road, which is not supposed to have all those big guys driving on it, drive it sometime and watch those semis go screaming by. This is being set up for failure without an infrastructure being put down first, or at least a comprehensive plan that the residents understand and can live with and say, "Things like this are good." That type of insight is not there. I believe that we can accommodate growth. It's got to happen, understand, but let's do it with measure and with a clear understanding of what the plan is and how our taxes are going to pay for contractor-developed requirements that are imposed on us. Thank you very much.
Is anyone else to speak in opposition? Hearing done. I will now open the floor for rebuttal. Mr. Ferguson, you have 20 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I think only my wife puts up with me talking 20 minutes at a time. I will not do that. Where do I start? Let's just get a few things straight that I think have been misrepresented or misunderstood. We're putting in 225 houses at the most on this property. Our plan calls for minimum lot sizes of 10,000 to 15,000 square feet, so it will be 10,000 to 15,000. 15,000 square feet, to put it in perspective, is the same size of your average lot in Riverview and most of Lakeside and most of the core city of Suffolk. Average size, that's a 100 by 150 lot, is 15,000 square feet. That's not a postage stamp. I think it's a nice lot. I live on one. It will not be a cluster. This is not a cluster-type development where houses are going to be jammed. If it were, I really don't know why that matters to people who aren't using the neighborhood. It might affect people buying houses, but it's not going to be an issue in this case. We're going to have regular residential lots in this neighborhood. And so far as the school issue, and I'm just going down the list of some concerns, infrastructure, there was some thing that the student capability at some of the schools is inadequate. Every time you have a development, a developer's going to contribute money if he's going to cause an increase in students in a school, whether it's elementary, whether it's middle, and whether it's high school. In this case, staff has done its computations, and they're saying, "We're going to have this many new students, which is a result of what you're doing, and we will be paying the estimated cost of building a new school for that many students." And it's a lot of money. And that's why we have these new schools. As the city has grown, we've got new schools, and Suffolk has a great public school system. I take issue with people saying we have an inadequate school system in the City of Suffolk. I really do. In regards to what we were going, the $25,000, that wasn't to do total engineering for any road things that we might cause. That was $25,000 to go towards whether or not a stoplight should be put at the end of the bypass because of traffic coming in for what is already, you know, going on to Pitchkettle Road. That was the purpose of that $25,000, not to do engineering studies for, you know, a large part of the City of Suffolk. That would be an unreasonable request of any developer. In regards to the Lake Cahoon speakers, I just want to take a little bit of a different... I'm going to have to differ with them. Once you come down Lake Kilby Road and you turn, take that little sharp turn to get on what is Lake Cahoon Road, which is not a part of the Lake Cahoon that curves naturally with Kilby. So Kilby comes around and then takes a hard turn and goes on to what is Lake Cahoon, that's where there is a flooding problem. That's where there are 14-and-a-half-foot roads, but that is not in our area. That is not a part of the proposed growth area. Once you turn that corner, it's a little bit different atmosphere there, and we're not going to be going down that part of Lake Cahoon Road. I think Mr. Harris's place is about 2,000 feet from that intersection, and it does get narrowed down there. And I'm telling you, no one uses Lake Cahoon Road for a thoroughfare. They use it because they live there. It's not a good road to just take a drive on unless it's Sunday afternoon. I promise you that, but it is a pretty street, a road. We've attempted to go over the things. I know that one young lady who has obviously many skills dealing with structures and roads and development. I've got to rely on the staff of the City of Suffolk. Our numbers come from the formulas that are devised by the engineers and the staff of the City of Suffolk. You can take statistics, and you can play with them any way you want to. We play our game by the way the City of Suffolk tells us to. So any numbers which we have presented to you were presented to you in the fashion and using the format that the City of Suffolk instructed us to present them. I do believe that this is a good development, and I want to go back to the emphasis that this development will have an impact in the long run helping that dead area over by Holland Road. The development on 58 didn't kill Holland Road between the bypass and the Lipton Tea Plant. That area's been dead a long time out there across from the golf course. It had nothing to do with the development on 58. It's just, the area, just people don't utilize it. And I think that once we get our development in, you're going to find people taking that, going down Kilby to Lake Cahoon on over to Holland Road, which is a very short drive, very short drive from where our south driveway would be, and they would be coming on into town that way, and you would see them utilizing facilities, opening new businesses in the shopping center across from the golf course, which is at this point dead. So I understand some of the concerns of the residents. I understand there are people who want no development in the city until there's major infrastructure changes, but where are you going to draw that line? I submit to you that we have met all the facility requirements of the city. We have a staff that's very competent, and we have attempted to meet all of the standards that they have met, and I think that we have a good development. We would ask that you approve our development plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I will now close the public hearing. Is there any comments from the commissioners, questions?
Ms. Chairman, I do have some questions, probably with a variety of different individuals. Maybe start with Amy. I live in the area, so I'm very familiar with this particular situation. The repairs to Lake Kilby Road, the widening of, and this might be for the developers as well, to the 20 feet, we've had some questions about that not meeting specifications that the state requires 24 feet. I think there's probably a limitation on how much width can be added based on the existing right-of-way. Is that one of the considerations there?
That is correct. The right-of-way along Lake Kilby Road, it does vary, but the reason that the developer proffered widening the road only to 20 feet is because it would require that they purchase property from folks on either side of Lake Kilby north for 3,000 feet. So it would require all of those property owners to be willing to sell their land for the right-of-way, and the city acquire that right-of-way to widen the road farther than 20 feet. So the developer proposed 20 feet to fit within what's already existing city right-of-way.
Okay. Going along with that as well, I would presume that... Okay, going along with that as well, I would presume that that would mandate the ditches being completely redone as well. As a part of that widening, I think it's 3,200 feet or something like that, would there also be a drainage engineering study required to make sure that the water, because you're gonna flatten the road so you don't have the crown, but the additional water that will be running off into the ditches, I believe it already floods now, so by removing the crown, it would look like, unless there are additional efforts at carrying that water somewhere, you're gonna have substantial flooding even in excess of what's there. So, question really is, are there any, would there be any drainage engineering as a part of the widening of that 3,200 feet?
The applicant has not proposed any modifications to the existing ditches. Their goal was to level out the, the significant hump in the road and, in places where it is 14 or 15 feet, to widen it to 20 feet, so you would have a little bit more pavement draining into those ditches.
Okay. The, the other thing is that, in the proposal, and I'm sure this is in everyone that comes before us, under the stormwater management program, it says that the applicant will be required to address these concerns, meaning the water draining issues, during the engineering plan review. Do we have any idea at present where the water that's on this property is going? Maybe the developer knows that, maybe that's not a question for you.
So at the time of rezoning, they did not do a full-blown engineering design, but they did do a conceptual layout. I can flip back to the variance materials, so there are several stormwater ponds that they have envisioned in these locations, however, this would probably shift and modify a little bit during engineering plan review. It's important to know that the developer's responsible for the water contained within their site, they're unable to treat the stormwater that's to the north or south of their site as those subdivisions were not developed by them.
Okay, I guess to carry that another, a little bit further. I know we've had some situations in, like Huron Point, where the water running from the adjacent farmland was flooding and, and the capacity of the pipes was not capable as it was initially put in. I believe the city had to go back and, and fix that at a later date. So, we don't, we don't really know at this point until that engineering study is where the water will go from the entire property, once it goes through the ponds.
That's correct. I would welcome if the applicant would like to address that question, they could as well.
I'll save that for, for later.
Okay, that's fine.
Let me see if I've got anything else for you, Amy. I will just say one thing, I know there was a conflicting information dealing with the 515 units versus the 225, and I believe that's been resolved by the proffer that was, I think originally they were not gonna proffer the final number until the engineering phase, but I, then I see that, you know, obviously it's, it's the number, it's been added as, I think, proffer number one, to limit the number. I think that's all I have for you, Amy.
All right, thank you.
I do have some questions for some others.
Go ahead, Mrs. Taylor.
Go ahead. Maybe the developer, Greer or Mr. Arnett, I did talk to Mr. Arnett, so maybe if Mr. Arnett could ask him some questions about the site, or Greer, either one? Yes.
I think he may be more capable than I am.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Mr. Arnett, thank you. I appreciate the information you provided me by phone and, and also on a much earlier visit. Do you have any indication as to where the water from this site is gonna go? And I'll tell you, I have a concern, because if it drains towards the Pitch Kettle Farms area, I know there's a ditch that runs back there that ultimately crosses Pitch Kettle Road, which already floods during periods of high rain, and it ends up in my backyard, that's a side point, but, but, but I am concerned, obviously, because ultimately it, I may get some of that water, I'm probably already getting it, but, do, do you know?
Can Amy put that exhibit back up, please? Okay, to the, I guess the south, to the right, the first entrance off Lake Kilby, where we have those two BNP's?
Yeah.
There'll be drainage from the second BNP down between the lots and the bypass, and there's a big box culvert that's under the interstate, under the expressway now, I think it's a double box culvert, okay? And then it goes into the drainage ditch, and, you know, my engineers will go through this stuff, but we've been through there as far as how this site's gonna drain, but it'll go through that, the box culvert, and then the, and wherever that, the water that's in that ditch now runs, that's where, that's how it go, that's how it flows.
Along the 58 bypass, I would presume, okay.
And then, on the big BNP up top, it goes through a concourse, there's a drainage concourse that goes through Pitch Kettle Estates, I don't think, it doesn't go over to the other side of Pitch Kettle Road, and I think it goes up by that commerce property and makes its way to the bypass drainage concourse, too. Now, one thing we can't do, we can't impact, you know, due to the drainage regulations, we can't impact other neighbors, other subdivisions, so in the engineering calculations, they take all of that in consideration.
So, so this, the drainage from that main retention pond would not empty into the retention pond in Pitch Kettle Farms?
Pitch Kettle Farms, is Pitch Kettle Farms, Pitch Kettle State or Pitch Kettle Farms?
Pitch Kettle Farms.
I mean, is that?
Same.
Same, same, it's same area, it's the pond that's, it's on the estates, but...
I'm, I'm not sure if that's a public easement or not, you know, and I, I just know that when we were talking to our engineers that were putting this together, and they'd done their calculations, that there is a drainage concourse through there that is public easements that our water can flow.
Okay.
Now, the other thing you had mentioned, too, about the roadway, the road widening, the reason it's 20 feet is because of, obviously, the right-of-way takings, there's not enough right-of-way. What we plan to do is, is increase the 20 feet wide, but also clean out the ditches, you have to modify some of the ditches, because obviously the road's so narrow, you have to move the ditches further back out, but we're, we have to stay within the existing right-of-way.
Okay, I, I thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Is the traffic engineer here? Yeah, I think I saw, so, okay. In, in dealing with the, the traffic issues, one point, since I got that one right in front of me, I see that there's a $25,000 to assist in the preliminary engineering, engineering study for the ramp junction intersections, and I think it says Route 58 and Pitch Kettle Road.
Yes, sir.
Is there any consideration with, I believe the project is saying that most of the traffic will exit onto Lake Kilby or Lake Cahoon Road, which would carry it out to 58, which would ultimately tie into the 58 bypass at that intersection there? Is there any consideration that the city has looked into as to the impact of this traffic in that intersection? Because there is, at, at that intersection, and I don't know on the update with the changes that are being made on 58 now, will there be a substantial increase in the right-turn lane getting off of Holland Road onto the 58 bypass?
So you're asking down at Holland Road business?
Well, Holland Road business ties into the 58 bypass.
Currently, six miles.
I guess west, eastbound traffic that will be making a right turn at that, that, that intersection there.
Yes, sir.
Is there any plans by the city, or the state, or whomever, to put additional right-turn lanes there onto the bypass? If, if this is gonna create hundreds of additional trips per day, it looks like there's a potential huge bottleneck that could occur. I'm a simple guy, but it looks like a bit tremendous bottleneck trying to get on the bypass from that way. Do you know if there's anything?
This study did not look that far out, the, the scope of the study ended at the Holland Road business, which is an, an RTO or roadway, so that was the end of the scope, in accordance with 31601 of the ordinance, requires us to take a look out to the nearest RTO or roadway.
And I guess I could follow up with that and say, where the, where Lake Cahoon Road T-bones at Route 58 or the Holland Road, any consideration about the additional traffic that would be making right turns onto Holland Road there, far as a right-turn lane, or traffic light or something along that line?
We've studied that recently, and we looked at that, due to the geometry of that overpass there, it's, it's very hard to do any improvements right in that area, because you get underneath the, the overpass for the ramp that's going from the 13 bypass to the eastbound 58 bypass, so there are some, some other things that I've looked at, that have been looked at in that area to maybe create some new interchanges or to divert traffic into other directions to kind of spread it out a little bit. But, in the most recent study that we've done, looking at that interchange, there wasn't an easy answer identified for how to increase capacity under that, that overpass and at that intersection. The current widening project ends there at that intersection, does not account for any improvements within that intersection, so any improvements would have to be part of a future project.
I think that's all questions I have, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Somebody had the staff recommend, if I'm not mistaken, denial for this request?
So, with the failure of the variance being approved, staff would recommend denial of this, because it contains a proffer related to access, which is required. In general, the, the rezoning does align with the, the principles and themes of the comprehensive plan, being in the suburban use district, but with that proffer, staff cannot be supportive.
So, with the variance failure, proffer eight, will we have three entrances or exits out of this, or that's, gotta be a massage?
No, no, presently, as it's presented, and the applicant does not have an opportunity before you all to amend that proffer statement, so as it is currently presented by the applicant, staff cannot support it.
Question, what would happen if we made proffer eight go away? Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, this is not like a conditional use permit?
Yeah, no.
So, the planning commission cannot modify the proffers. Additionally, under the UDO, the applicant does not have an opportunity to amend its proffers until after this body has made its decision and made its recommendation, then there is the opportunity up until city council votes on it for them to amend their proffers as they see fit, based on the public comments. But at this, at this point, there, there isn't anything that can be changed.
Mr. Chairman, that being said, I would make a recommendation to deny rezoning request RZN 2021-018, and I do have some additional comments I'd like to make after we, before we vote.
Got a motion for denial from Commissioner Staylor?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Everwine. Discussion of the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of a continuation from our last meeting, and deals with the infrastructure and the comprehensive plan, and exactly how the city and the planning commission and council are looking at the development of our city. And, as I stated, for one of the other developments, that, the big one on Pitch Kettle Road, it, it looks as though that the infrastructure of the, particularly the suburban growth district, is, is vastly unable to handle the capacity of the developments that are coming before us, plus now and in the future. And it, it looks like, I mentioned that the, we're putting the horse before the cart, and I know we don't have unlimited amounts of money in the budget, or when we are developing our plan for the future, and it just seems like we're always looking for someone else to pay for everything, which I, I agree, that's much better than the citizens having to pay for everything, but sometimes when, and maybe this is, is something that needs to be addressed by the comprehensive plan committee, and I'd ask all of you out there, citizens of the city, that's where you can make an impact, and that's the, there's gonna be public meetings held on the development of the 2045 comprehensive plan. You need to show up, you need to go to these, and you need to let the folks that are serving on those committees know exactly where you're standing. I think it's, it's obviously been planned, been pointed out to us in, in many of the, of the situations we've got. I even had a council member call me on something else that was coming up for us today that's been pulled, concerned about a two-lane road and trucks on it and the inability of the roads to handle the traffic. So, I, I just, I'm concerned about the city's ability to handle the development, particularly in that suburban growth area, and I think it needs to be looked at real hard by the entire city, by the comprehensive plan, and, and by council. So, that's, that's the comments that I have, and I do thank everybody for coming in and voicing your opinions, so thank you. That's it.
And I might add, the motion you made was for the eight proffers.
For the denial, for the denial, with, with the eight proffers, yes.
Any other comments from commissioners before we call for the vote? Call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero to deny this application.
This will go to council on November 16th with a motion for denial, and we will take a 15-minute recess. I will now call the commissioners back to order, and the next item on our agenda is the rezoning request RZN 2022-011, conditional mini warehouse. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Rezoning request RZN 2022-011, conditional mini warehouse, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions Agent, on behalf of John Wright, Waverton Associates, applicant, on behalf of Bronco Credit Union, property owner, in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official map of the city of Suffolk to change zoning from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to be to General Commercial Zoning District for property located at 3075 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 25, Parcels 29M. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough, zoned OI... zoned OI Office Institutional Zoning District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2022-011, conditional. And this is related, the next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit for the same property and our staff planner, Joshua Bateman, will present. This is a combined presentation. It will be, I believe, necessary to open two separate public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Josh Bateman. I'm the principal planner in the Department of Planning here for the city. And it's my pleasure to present to you this evening the proposed mini warehouse building at 3075 Godwin Boulevard. To avoid repetition and for all of our sakes, I will be combining the presentations on these two separate, the rezoning and the conditional use permit requests into one presentation. These two cases are inseparable, so action on the one is needed before the action on the other can, can occur. As Mr. Wyman pointed out, this is a conditional rezoning request for a parcel 25, 29M, located at 3075 Godwin Boulevard, approximately five acres. And the application is accompanied by a concurrent request for a conditional use permit to establish a mini warehouse on the property contingent upon prior approval of the requested rezoning. Mini warehouses are not currently permitted in the Office Institutional District, but they are permitted as a conditional use in the B2 General Commercial District. And the portion that's the subject of this request is located behind the existing Bronco Federal Credit Union at that location. And as Mr. Wyman said, it's in the Central Growth Area and Suburban Land Use District. The subject parcel is currently zoned OI and surrounds an adjoining out parcel, which is 29M13085 Godwin Boulevard. That's currently undeveloped, but was created by a previous subdivision plat to the north of the property. You can see the street, the lines representing future streets. That's in the planter station subdivision, which is currently under development. That's zoned PD Plan Development. To the west are the King, existing King's Landing Town Homes, which are zoned PD Plan Development. To the south is the gallery, is the Future Gallery at Godwin Mixed Use Development, which consists of multi-story buildings, apartments located above retail and office. That's currently under construction and that's zoned B2. And to the east across Godwin Boulevard are medical offices, also zoned B2. The applicant is proposing to construct a three-story climate-controlled self-storage building having a footprint area of approximately 36,300 square feet. The primary access point for vehicles is the existing right-in, right-out entrance to the southbound lane of Godwin Boulevard that was installed as part of the construction of the credit union back in 2005. A stubout to the property to the south was constructed, constructed at that same time to afford secondary access to the property. A stubout at the same location is proposed as part of the gallery at Godwin, which is currently under development, to permit vehicles to travel between the two sites without, without having to turn back out onto Godwin Boulevard and adding traffic congestion to that roadway, however minimally. Principal access to the building is through exterior doorways that lead to interior hallways. The only vehicular loading area will be located on the north side of the building, not on the front side of the building facing traffic, and that is per the UDO supplemental use requirements for mini warehouses. The subject parcel is a subject to a, is subject to conditional use permit improved in 2004 for the existing drive-through bank that resulted in that project. The entire site shown on the concept plan was zoned Commerce Park prior to being rezoned OI in 2004. The out parcel is the subject of a recent site plan approved in 2021 for the Gualtoni Dental Office. It includes two medical office buildings on that out parcel. And the applicant has requested waivers from the requirements for traffic impact analysis and fiscal impact analysis based on, one, the lack of significant additional traffic being generated by the use on Godwin Boulevard. And two, the positive fiscal impact in terms of revenues over expenditures anticipated from the proposed commercial use. The applicant did submit a market study, which shows the demand for this particular business relative to existing supply within a 10-minute drive time. So the, the, the next slide here shows the layout of the site currently. The proposed mini warehouse site, as you can see here, is located directly behind the credit union. The Future Dental Office is surrounded by this subject parcel and it's shown there. The two entrances are likewise shown. And the proposed gallery at Godwin next door on the property to the south is in that sort of asphalted area that you see there on the left side of the slide. The subject property is served by the two entrances that I indicated. And as I indicated earlier, dental offices, dental and medical offices are planned on the out parcel, although when that occurs is, is still an open question at this point. But that site plan has been approved. So as you can see from a photo that I took on Friday, the image there on the top right corner is the gallery at Godwin under development. As you can see compared to the image immediately to the left, good progress has been made on construction of the actual building. I was fortunate enough to get a snap a shot from the same perspective. The parking lot and some of the site improvements still need to be put in, but the build, construction of the building is underway. I took a couple of images as well. The lower left image just shows sort of the frontage of the parcel that we're talking about, the existing credit union or bank next to the gallery at Godwin, the mixed use development under construction. And the image there on the lower right represents what you'll see from the front of the, of front of the mini warehouse, proposed mini warehouse building. That's the drive aisle that will be directly in front of that building. So that's what you'll see looking to the south and east. This exhibit simply shows the boundaries or extent of the subject property, tax map parcel 25*29M. That is the subject of the rezoning and CUP requests. The CUP concept site plan is shown on the next slide. Just wanted to point out a couple of things here. So it shows the configuration of the mini warehouse building on the property, but it may be a little difficult to see what's current, what's existing and what's proposed. So the development that you see here, the bank, that's existing. This is the sort of the out parcel. I don't think I can quite get up there, but that's a future proposed, but it shows the layout of those two buildings and the parking lot that were, what proved as part of that site plan and the proposed mini warehouse building and sort of the drive aisle and parking area surrounded is shown here. So this, this drive aisle directly in front is existing. And this, all three uses will utilize this existing commercial entrance and driveway. A significant portion of the property is encumbered by an ingress egress easement for that drive aisle, utility and drainage easements, including a significant stormwater pond, about a three-quarter acre stormwater pond located in the northern corner of the property. That is surrounded by a very nice looking fence, black finish, sort of wrought iron looking fence, which will be a nice visual addition, I think, was a nice visual addition to this site. And existing landscaping in this area here, so these trees are existing and they provide a nice buffer to adjoining residential uses here and here. The applicant is proposing enhanced buffers along the corners of the property next to King's Landing and the gallery at Godwin, 30-foot mixed landscaping buffers consisting of evergreen and shade trees. I think the requirement in the SCOD district is 15 feet. They're proposing 30 feet to really buffer that from the adjacent residential uses. So the Department of Public Utilities, the Public Works Engineering Division and Public Works Traffic Engineering have evaluated this application. In addition, fire and rescue looked at this between the first and the second submittal and the project was sort of reconfigured and redesigned to make sure that fire apparatus has access to all sides of the building. You'll notice these turnarounds for the larger fire trucks here and here. So that was as a result of, of their comments. And at this point, each have indicated no objections to the proposed rezoning and conditional use based on these revisions that were, that were recently made. In addition, the applicant has provided some conceptual elevation examples. And these were meant to demonstrate the standards, which are robust for mini warehouse buildings, especially these ones that are access, accessible only through interior hallways. They require things like variations in roof heights, projections and indentations, articulation and features like awnings at entry, primary entrance, entrance ways, use of varying building materials. And so the image, and the top image is probably most representative of that. Also, significant window coverage, and you see that in the top image. The bottom image was included to show that it probably will not be wrapped with the stacked stone veneer. It'll probably be more like brick so that we can more closely match what's next door on the gallery at Godwin, as you saw from those photo renderings. They used more brick in the facade, so that would be, it would make sense for them to use that in this case as well. But those will be enforced at the time of site plan review. And as I indicated, they are robust and will ensure, I believe, an attractive building. The sole proffer as part of this request would limit the use of the property to the current bank, other office uses, uses and the requested mini warehouse use. So that would be the limits of the use of this property. The rezoning and conditional use permit were both evaluated using the themes, policies and actions of chapter two of the 2035 comprehensive plan, which call for the B2, the, the, excuse me, the suburban growth, suburban land use district to include neighborhood scale retail uses like the proposed use, which serve nearby residential neighborhoods. And this use certainly will do that for folks moving in and moving out of the area. The proposed rezoning was found to be consistent with policies 21 through 24, as described in the staff report, and that analysis is included there. In addition, the requested condition use was evaluated relative to the base zoning district requirements for the B2 district, even though it was not yet zoned to B2. The supplemental use standards for mini warehouses and the criteria for approving CUPs generally, staff determined that the requested conditional use in this location and subject to the conditions recommended therein are consistent with the UDO and the comprehensive plan. And a detailed evaluation analysis of, of how the project is compliant with, with those criteria is included in the staff report for the conditional use permit. Staff recently, is recently, I think, as last week, did discuss this project with a representative of the company that purchased the gallery at Godwin Mixed Use Development. This kind of transaction is not, not at all atypical in these, when, when projects are under development. And that gentleman did express, and I forgive me for not remembering his name, but he did express concern about the potential for a whole lot of moving trucks going, traveling through his parking lot using that secondary entrance. One of the things I explained to him was that the entry, the stubout on the applicant's property is already present. It's been present since 2005. So it's his site plan for the project that, that he acquired and now owns that calls for the actual, actually making that connection and stubbing it out on the gallery at Godwin property. And we talked about it at some length. We expect it as staff, and I've discussed this with Kevin and other staff members, that the majority of the site traffic to and from the site is going to be from the south. That doesn't mean that there won't be folks from planter, moving into planter station that may turn or turn to the north or, or approach the site from the north. But we expect southbound to be the primary direction for traffic utilizing, utilizing the site. So a couple of things to keep in mind here. Navigation apps, in my experience, and I have a lot of experience with these Google Maps and these navigation apps, they don't typically route traffic through other private sites and other private drive aisles to get into. So that's, that's not typical. And there is a process for if they do that, to get them to no longer do that. And I've been through that process before. It's not easy, but it can be done. So that's, that's one consideration. The other consideration is if we do get folks travel, that are, they're looking to maybe use that signalized intersection at Hill Point Boulevard South, I think is the interchange there. If they, if they do end up utilizing that, that inner, that interchange the first time to turn into the site, it's not exactly easy to get a, a large box truck through a commercial parking lot, especially if you're towing a car carrier or something like that. You'll make that mistake once, you probably won't make that mistake a second time. So the condition that staff is recommending on the subsequent slide, condition number two, is meant to address this issue. And I think it'll, will, will serve its purpose well in, in that regard. Oops, excuse me. So staff, with respect to the rezoning, staff recommends approval of the conditional rezoning with the one proffered condition tendered by the applicant. Also, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit subject to the following conditions. One, this conditional use permit is granted to establish a mini warehouse in substantial conformance with the conceptual site plan attached here to as exhibit C for the subject property located at 3075 Godwin Boulevard, tax map parcel 2529, as shown on exhibit B property map. Two, the applicant shall install signage, subject to all zoning regulations and permit requirements applicable thereto, as determined by the zoning administrator, as necessary to direct moving vans and trucks to utilize the primary commercial entrance on Godwin Boulevard to access the site and try to limit that usage of the cross connection between the subject parcel and tax parcel 2925H. Three, the applicant shall be responsible to ensure compliance with all local and state laws and ordinance of the City of Suffolk and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And four, the applicant is required to obtain all necessary building permits from the Division of Community Development and approval of a site plan from the Division of Planning for the design of improvements associated with this request. And just to elaborate on number two, it's not regulatory and, and it is open-ended. It's a little bit flexible. I think probably a sign, and I've seen them used before, that says, no trucks this entrance, and it has a picture of a box truck with a circle and a slash through it. No, no delivery trucks or no bo, moving trucks this exit placed on the entrance to that site from the gallery at Godwin and/or from the other direction, the direction of the subject property, I think will, will do well. We're not talking about a significant, we don't expect that to be a significant volume of trucks. What I explained to that gentleman was I, I think, if you see one or two box trucks a day going through your parking lot, that would be the most I think you would probably see. I, I think, you know, the, most people want to turn directly into site that they're going to. They don't want to have to figure out, how do I navigate through this adjacent site to get where I'm trying to go? So that's the recommendation of staff and I'm available to answer any questions you have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. I will now open the public hearing for the rezoning request, RZN 2022-011, conditional mini warehouse. Who would like to speak in favor of that request?
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name is Melissa Venable. I am one of the owners of Land Planning Solutions, representing Bronco Bank, Mr. Wright and Mr. Phil Smith, who is present this afternoon if you have additional questions for him. I want to thank Mr. Bateman. He's done a fantastic job of covering really all the issues that have come up, but he's also been a pleasure to work with through this process. When we not only started, we had a slightly different plan, but he worked with us on modifying it to fulfill all the standards that we needed to fulfill. Really, the reason for the rezoning today is because in an O and I zoned property, which is, I'm not suggesting that it's the wrong zoning, but we cannot do a mini warehouse in O and I, so we have to make the modification to B2. But we believe B2 is very fitting along Godwin Boulevard. It's what the gallery at Godwin is also zoned adjacent to the property and it's compatible with the other uses as, as well as, like I said, along B2. I mean, along Godwin Boulevard, you see a lot of other B2 properties and, and it does make sense. I wanted to also note that recently, not directly across the street, but behind the office use, the Port 58 apartments have been built. The gallery at Godwin obviously has both retail as well as residential. We have planter station to the north and King's Landing Townhouse behind the site or to the west of the site. So in all those instances, a warehouse site that doesn't look like mini warehouse, but instead looks similar to an office building, I think is very suitable and fitting. The Bronco Bank site is underutilized, as you know. The, the front of the property along Godwin is a wonderful site. It's, it's a bank that is, I think, highly used here in Suffolk. But two and a half acres or more behind that bank site is not used currently, but it has stormwater management, has access and it has utilities. So to us, it made sense to be able to utilize the site and with something that's a good transition use, as we're talking about today, that won't affect any of the properties that are adjacent to it, but instead I think complement them. As you noted, planning staff was kind enough to waive the request for the traffic impact analysis or the requirement, but I did go online and look. analysis or the requirement, but I did go online and looked at a couple of traffic impact analysis and data for a site like this. And if it helps, I wanted to note that the one I, the one I read in particular that was very similar in size to this added one extra car at the peak hour, one, one ingress trip at the peak hour, and throughout the day, because most of the time when you're coming to your, that site, it's not your peak hours, throughout the day, but a potential of 10 trips at most. So I thought that was helpful information to have for the example. I'm not saying that's exactly what's going to happen here, but it is the example that I read through, and I thought it was good information to share. I also talked to Mr. Cathcart, who is a client of ours and the adjacent property owner that Mr. Bateman had talked about, the conversation he had with him. Mr. Cathcart is, was his name. He was a little bit concerned about that interconnectivity, but I think Mr. Bateman was able to reassure him that we would avoid trying to put the box trucks through, through the site and instead look at that main entrance from Godwin into the site for large trucks and vehicles. Though I do think the interconnection is very helpful because it does take people from where we don't have a street light, maybe residents of gallery at Godwin going over to the bank, or bank users coming across over to gallery at Godwin. I do think it's helpful to have that connection so that you don't have to go back out onto Godwin and make a U-turn, but instead you could potentially go out to the light at Hill Point South. So I, I hope that covers everything. I think Mr. Bateman did a fantastic job. I will stand by if you have additional questions. I will also note that they are hoping to move forward fairly quickly on this site, and we're hoping to see construction start in the summer of 2023, possibly some surcharging before that if possible. So you may see some activity if we are fortunate to be able to get your approval as well as council's approval, but we would like to move this along fairly quickly if possible, which I think is good because I hate to see rezonings and then nothing. So I would, that, that is the plan, that this would move quickly in 2023. I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venable. And thanks for that clarification from my own edification surcharge. I could never remember what it is. Is anyone else speaking in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone in speaking opposition? Hearing none. I will close the, the public hearing on rezoning request, RZN 2022-011. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve RZN 20, I mean, 2022-011. Motion for approval with Commissioner.
I second that motion, but to amend it with any conditions that might be applying. You can't.
Six, second.
Yeah, okay. And just for clarification, this is for the rezoning only with, there are no conditions associated with that, just the proffers.
Any discussion in motion? If not, Mr. Wyman, will you call for the vote?
Yes. Commissioners, please vote. All right. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Start your process, Ms. Venable. This will go to City Council, 111622, with a motion for approval. And now I will open the public hearing for conditional use permit, CUP 2022-019, mini warehouse. Do you have any additional comments that could open the public hearing? Okay. Any opposition? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Chair, I'd like to offer a motion for approval of CUP 2022-019 with conditions.
Motion with the four conditioners, Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
Mr. Creetmore for a second. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, you call for the vote, please.
All right. Commissioners, please vote. All right. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Venable. You will be going to City Council on November 16th. Both, both items approved. The next item on our agenda and the last item, I think, on the public hearings, let me make sure. Yep. Is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-021, 1013 Raven Hills Road, submitted by Mrs. Paulino. This is for a daycare, I think it is.
Yes, sir. This is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-021, 1013 Raven Hill Road, submitted by Wendy Paulino, applicant and property owner on behalf of Jose Paulino, property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children on property located at 1013 Raven Hill Road, zoning map 26L, parcel 174. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk voting borough, Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density zoning district. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the central growth area in a ring suburban use district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report in recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2022-021. Returning with us is our good friend, Grace Brazil, staff planner. She'll provide staff's report.
Thank you, and good afternoon. As stated, this CUP is to establish a family day home, five to 12 children on property located at 1013 Raven Hill Road. The property is located within the Greystone Reserve subdivision and features a single-family dwelling approximately 3,400 square feet in size. The property is zoned and surrounded by a property-zoned RLM Residential Low Medium zoning district. So the applicant is requesting to establish a daycare to allow for the maximum of 12 children in their single-family home from ages six weeks to five years of age. The proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The applicant has stated that the first floor of the home, including the kitchen, dining room, living room, half bathroom, and the finished double-car garage, will be used. So these are the images of the garage that has been converted into livable space. There are supplemental standards for family day homes outlined in Section 31-701 of the Suffolk Unified Development Ordinance. These standards have been reviewed as part of this request. As it pertains to the areas of the home that will be utilized by the daycare, a total of 1,780 square feet is designated for the use, which does meet the minimum indoor space per child of 50 square feet. So in addition to the required parking for a residential use, each family day home shall provide a minimum of one parking space plus one parking space for each additional employee. The applicant is providing four off-street parking spaces, which is in addition to the on-street parking that is available. And those four off-street parking spaces are going to be in the driveway area. The site itself meets the minimum required, required parking as there will be two employees. So currently, the property does feature a fenced-in outdoor play area approximately 3,600 square feet in size. The use of the play area will not begin before 8:00 a.m. or extend beyond 5:30 p.m. The provided outdoor space does exceed the 1,000-square-foot minimum requirement, and it also aligns with the required hours of operation. So lastly, when evaluating the conditional use review criteria, the use should not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood as the use will be located within a single-family dwelling and the outdoor play area is within a fenced backyard. Additionally, as noted, this request does meet the supplemental standards for a family day home. As such, it conforms to the character of the neighborhood. Staff finds that the proposed use meets criteria for conditional use permit set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-021 with conditions as noted in staff's report. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions after. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Welcome home.
Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone who's speaking in opposition? Hearing none? I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one brief question of, of, of Grace. When I, when I went by and looked at the property, I just did it from my car, and of course, the fence is, is very well secluded, so you couldn't really see in the backyard. Just want to make sure there is no swimming pool.
Correct. There's no swimming pool.
Thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of CUP 2022-021 with the seven conditions.
Second the motion.
Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none? Mr. Wyman, you call for the vote, please.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This, again, this will be going to City Council on November 16th for this motion for approval. Moving to all business.
Sir?
Your business, status report, do I?
Yeah. So the status report of the items that went before City Council at their meeting of September 21st, 2022, that included rezoning request, RZN 2021-020, conditional Port 460 Logistics Center that was approved with amended proffers, proffers that were amended after your meeting but prior to City Council's consideration. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-002, conditional Bob White Lane that was approved also with amended proffers. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-016D, Little Den Daycare was approved with conditions as recommended. Subdivision variance request, SBV 2022-002, 611 and 711 Factory Street. This granted a variance for connectivity and secondary access requirements. That was approved with the staff recommended conditions. And ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-004, for the Central Business District. You may recall that the primary purpose of this is to allow multifamily not otherwise enumerated as a matter of right in the Central Business District. This was approved by City Council.
We had no preliminary plats.
Uh, no, we did not.
Commissioners, anybody got anything left they want to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, real, real quick and short. Voting day is November 8th. I don't believe we meet before that time, so I just urge everyone to vote for your candidate. I hope he's the same one that I'm voting for.
I'd just like to remind each of you that this month is not the celebration of, but the recognition of two important facets within our lives, and that is domestic violence and, uh, breast cancer. Domestic violence doesn't get so much, people don't look at it as hard as they look at cancer. So therefore, I just feel compelled to remind you that the person who is sitting next to you knows somebody who is being violated in a domestic way. They don't tell, and there are too many people who are silent. So if you got a friend who has a friend who's being violated, talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, from the Committee on Ordinances, I'd like to get two things on the agenda. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
No, no, no. No problem. This would be an easy vote, I promise you. But the first one is to, and it's just a, changing the proffers, amending the school proffers, it, it's a policy change, but we would like to bring it before the full planning commission, before it goes to council. And the second one is an ordinance text amendment, changing the definition and refining the requirements for flex space use. So we'll have two items to come before you next month. So I'd.
In addition to the other ones.
In addition to the other ones. But, you know, we're capable of the heavy lifting here. So I, I have that motion, and I need a second.
Second the motion.
All in favor? Okay. Motion carries. Any other comments? If not, we stand adjourned.